The next general item is statements on accounts. Decide whether to approve the statement accounts.
Chair, can we move to accept the working group reports?
Yes, that matters, then, then chief.
They just don't do that.
I'd like to wait there and give you answers.
So statement on accounts, decide whether to approve the statement accounts for 13th of October 17, and then second part, then consider budget for 13th of October 17. I just remind members that the budget setting is a management summary. It is not prescribed. Projects may spend, they may occasionally overspend with the forms of time. We will script that. Okay, just put that on the table. So, do you have any comments on the statement accounts?
Yes, I have written down, but some of the things Alison has very kindly provided me with at the beginning of the meeting. So if you could bear with me, I will try and miss those out. But initially, I wrote an email asking for a detailed description for all payments made to Mr Greg last month. On one day last month, he was paid by backs seven times totaling just over £2,300. This is the highest monthly amounts I have ever seen him paid, and this is also poor accounting practice. So I can pause, but I would like to know what he was paid for because actually I then went down on the cashbook and saw there was also about a couple of days later, an additional £20.
£2,017.
There are so many questions on this month's accounts that I fear that we might go over three minutes.
I don't want to comment more.
You'll see them on the bank statement, that he was paid by backs seven times in one day. If he's doing seven jobs, then he should just provide one invoice. And I'd like to know what he was paid £2,300 in total for.
I didn't realise it had come up for some reason on transaction detail.
Yeah, normally they do, so we can... I mean, I'm frustrated because we're told to ask questions.
I think council loans are coming.
And then I have other questions on the accounts. The one on Wicksteed Ledger has been resolved. And then there's a payment on the 13th of October was paid to Paul Ford, a tree surgeon, for £1,710. I'd like to know what that work was for and when it was approved, and who approved it, please.
That's for the basal growth and the work that was already said.
Okay, right. I won't say the name because we'll take it wrong. But on the 13th of October 2017, a councillor was paid various sums electronically. Most I can see relate to this new chamber furniture. I asked, could you please let me know who NBI is and what those purchases were for? And I would also like to know why the councillor was paid the money which should be going to the Royal British Legion for the poppies on the lamppost. The Leicestershire Royal British Legion organizer wrote to me stating the council would be invoiced directly, probably around December. Please, can you ensure we do not pay twice? And I do not think it's good practice for members to be paid to settle council debts. And I don't want that member to take this as an attack or anything against them. It is just very poor practice, especially when I move on to cashbook one, where none of the dates correspond with those payments and they don't give any indication that the member received the money, so it doesn't match with the bank statement. So we need to look at it because there will be times when perhaps councillors need to be reimbursed. But I think it needs to be...
Your time is just about up, councillor. Do you have anything else? Extend it if you want to ask questions. Or not, if you want to speak to that.
Well...
There is a paper trail.
Yeah, I know, but if I was the auditor and I went to pick out something, I would be...
I'm not going to extend your time to make a speech, I've said. So I don't ask you questions, all please, all belong.
So the question is really, as I've put here, cashbook one lists a number of payments to a payee, and they don't match the bank statement. So, and I don't recall this happening before, why has it happened this time? And I give an example, which is obviously the Royal British Legion. And it shows on the statement that the councillor was paid, and in brackets, whatever, the Royal British Legion. And then my question really is, should the cashbook not show who was actually paid the money on the amounts paid to that councillor? Should they not have had the name put in brackets or... You know, it's just not good. And then the final question on the accounts, I believe... Two questions, sorry, and then important. Oh no, sorry, it might be useful for other members. I did ask who Bully Davy was, and I did find out that it was an accountant. And that kindly, as Alison has told me, it relates to the payroll. So if anyone else was wondering, that question's been answered. My final question is from the accounts. For some time, I've not seen any evidence of the repayments from our former tenant of the Open Community Centre building. Please, can we confirm that these payments have been received or are being received? And has the balance been reduced or has it been cleared?
I think you've asked a lot of questions there.
Well, I did say there was a lot of questions, and I could go on with more. The councillor calling this month.
Councillor Brooks, let me finish. I think you've got a lot of questions there. It would not be fair to expect the clerk to have those answers.
No, no, I don't.
It would be much more useful if you put those questions...
I do. I do.
I haven't received any emails from the past clerk.
I have seen the clerk.
I haven't received any...
No, he likes it personally addressed to him, and I'm not going to do it. I'm sorry. It's obstructing my role as a councillor.
Well, not going to go beyond the role of the administrative actions that were put in place to protect the clerk.
Sanctions, as you called them, chairman.
This is all the general item. Have you put that in writing to make... Anybody else want to say?
No, I was hoping the clerk... I was hoping the clerk has heard my questions in the meeting and, as she said in the previous one, that she will answer me directly now, because I'm not going to do emails through you. It obstructs. So I've asked the questions in the meeting, and I'd appreciate it if the clerk responds to me. As she said she would. Thank you.
I think just for the benefit of all councillors, that I don't think the office do backs transactions or write cheques or process paid work every single day. They normally sort of do them maybe all on one day, so they raise a load of job sheets, then they enter on to the back system. So when you see multiple backs transactions on here with the same recipient, because we authorize jobs and we have to have job sheets, which have been agreed by council, you will then see these multiple recipients on the same day. So that would give the explanation there. None of the actions or jobs that have been done by Geoff Greg, I believe, are inappropriate. Everything, as the clerk has already pointed out, has got a paper trail. I will happily answer the questions in relation to the points that mine has raised. The Royal... Oh, the first question to the chair, is this council in debt? Is it in debt? Are we in debt? Councillor Brooks said the council's in debt.
An invoice is a debt. That's what I mean.
I like it.
No, an invoice is a debt.
Right, right. Councillor Brooks, so we're not in debt. Right. Just wanted to make that clear for the benefit of the public and the benefit of the tape, your honour. So the council's not in debt. Royal British Legion, let's cover that first. When this came to council, it came late. Martin had already spoken to a lady, I believe, in Leicester. He was going to hold some 45 pounds worth of poppies for this council, okay? So he had only agreed that. When I was then asked to put paper in, which I did, I actually approached the lady and sort of said, can we actually have 30 poppies, please, and not 15? So that was 90 pounds worth of poppies. And she said, yes, you may have that happen. And I agreed to pay them there and then, and I paid it over so because she said that they were on payment before they'd released them. Because I thought, even if this council did support what was a very good initiative, which might go to council, and has clearly been received by the public, I decided that I would do that. Then, when the council did agree and resolve to pay for 45 pounds worth of poppies, the council then reimbursed me 45 pounds. The actual invoice, which is sat in the office, is for 90 pounds, isn't it? Yeah, right. So I didn't mind doing that because I am rather in a fortunate position where sometimes I do have a little bit of surplus cash, and I'll use it where it goes to a good cause. I am never blanketed or blinkered by Open British Legion, Leicestershire British Legion, the National British Legion. If it's going to the British Legion, it's going to a good cause. I will not be hamstrung by those kind of issues. In regard to the items in the... Yes, Martin is also correct. Whereas I've actually gone out and paid for items like the bracket that was authorized by council, by the fittings that have been authorized by council, I paid for those at the time when I saw them, when the council agreed it. And in actual fact, you will find that the initial vote that was given to the council, you will find that were under budget, because not only have we paid, or I paid for them, straight away, when the council agreed it, we made a saving on the back of that. That saving has been paid, passed on to the council. So the council also has reimbursed my out-of-pocket expenses, ensuring that the council is able to fulfil its obligation whilst fulfilling the public's wishes to operate on their behalf. In relation to the NBI thing, many years ago, when I came to this council with a previous clerk, I had purchased myself a new badge. Martin is very kind in demonstrating what the badge looks like. And the clerk was quite impressed with this and sort of said, we could do with some professional-looking badges like that. Can you get some? He says, I'll use my delegated authority. If you order some badges for some of the members, and then we'll reimburse you. That is how that came about. In actual fact, from day one, because I'm quite a generous individual, I never approached the council and asked them to reimburse me. But with the latest inputs of councillors, because we keep having a high turnover for some reason, I did ask the clerk, can I submit the invoice for the badges this time round, please? And she, the clerk, said, yes. Well, the council will... I will do that. I could use my delegated authority because it's less than half the amount of money. It's purely an operational thing, so the badge is there. Councillor Brooks has no objection to wearing his badge. His badge was paid for by me, not by this council, okay? I have gone back to the NBI people and asked them to sort of review their devices. If the council don't have these badges, then that's fine, that's my problem. And that's it, chairman. I don't say anymore.
I'm sorry it was badges because I wasn't going to make an issue of that.
Does anybody else wish to add anything for this general item?
And I'm not offended by any...
All right, thank you.
No, I'm only pointing out is the cashbook statement.
Councillor Brooks, please. Anybody else wish for the main set? Okay, that case then.
Well, the clerk's excellent.
I'm closer.
Very good.
So Adam, you propose...
I'll have a second if I don't have a...
Hey, you second. All those in favour? 10 for James. And Stephen.
10 for James.
And Stephen. Thank you. And the second bit then is the consideration of management budgets. Now, the bishop has said before, budget is a financial requirement for Councillor Brooks.
Yes, I accept what you've said about that, so I won't be saying a lot of what I've said. But I do have concerns about the legal thing, and I think it's important that this is looked into. We had an organisation who wanted to lease the Open Community Centre, and we had to pay their legal fees. There's no indication that we're going to ask the prospective tenant to do the same. Now, I've looked at many commercial adverts online, and it very clearly says that a landlord can charge or does charge for legal costs. That's why landlords are rich.
What's your concern?
And my concern is that we're not passing on the cost of these legal costs to the tenant. And I just want some reassurance that with this new tenant, that they understand, because they've had commercial leases before, they're not going to come forward and say to you, you haven't charged us your legal bill. You know, they just need to be told upfront that they have to pay it.
And the council is not the sole tenant.
No, the council doesn't have to. It's good practice and normal practice that they pay.
That's your opinion.
Yeah, and I'm asking the council to look into it, please.
We actually are dealing with the budget.
That is in the budget. Yes, that's in the budget. We've overspent on it already, and we haven't had any more legal things. That's why I'm...
Well, I have actually, Councillor Brooks, we have a legal thing dealing with the tax reasons. That was not expected expense, and that is why it's over spent.
Well, I'm not mentioning that. I put it down to things like the previous person who wanted to rent it.
I'm explaining to you why that budget heading has overspent. Anybody else?
And can I finish? Sorry. The advertising budget, an overspend of £1,198, it's quite a lot of money. And we have got five months left of this year. And, you know, it's just a concern, although you say it's a flex budget and we can do things, but I think there should be some controls, because that affects the overspend, affects other things. We'll be talking about budgets a bit later. And we spend about £20,000 or £2,000 a month, and this budget only has £110,000 left for it in this financial year. But one of the concerns on there, and they may not need it, but I keep asking, and we have a representative. We asked, and I asked, for assistance advice to have some money in the budget. And nobody seems to have let them know that they need to apply for it. Well, you know, there's a new man... So I was wondering if our representative could point out and ask, do you require that money? Otherwise, it just sits there.
Three minutes is up.
And the people of Open have paid for it.
Anybody else wish to make a comment on the budget statement? Yes, Adam.
I was unaware that the... No, that's... No, I'm not going to respond. It's a question.
I did think when I did the report on the substantive advice, you know, that it says that I hadn't spoken to the treasurer and he was going to contact the clerk.
Okay, so now the proposal to accept the statement of the council.
Yes.
Okay, second up.
I've got that out of the place.
All those in favour? You've got... Sorry, you got that?
Yeah.
All those in favour?
Yes, please.
Yes. And James. Obstacles?
I thought we already voted on.
No, no, it's eight one, this is eight two.
Nine.
Also nine.
He says this Councillor Brooks is staying on.
I am.
All right, the next one then is the working groups advice in ten. Most working groups, which is covered by appendix A. I'll ask the clerk, so we'll make this my name. So what the clerk has produced is the working group, it's a grant, and the current membership. And the proposal for revision of working groups, if I hand over the clerk, can I just say that there is no minimum or maximum number of people that can be on a working committee? It's a working group that has delegated powers, and the council has never resolved to have minimum or maximum numbers. And when it was first brought up in 2015, I believe, there was very good reason for that, because working groups, or the matter of what they could do, but not that they would need to bear it, depending on what it is. So there is no minimum. The working group can have one person on it, or it could have the whole council.
The law, sorry, a point of order, chairman. The law says that you cannot have a working... You cannot have a working group of one person, and I've asked the clerk... Sorry, a point of order. I'd like the clerk to go and get the big book and show the Local Government Act, which says quite clearly, you cannot have a working group of one person. And in fact, it's... Councillor Woodley's got the Good Councillor Guide there, where it actually is in print. I don't know what page it's in, but I can get it on a computer. Page 33, chairman. Could you look at page 33 and retract your comment that a working group can be one person? Because that's unlawful. It's page 33 of the Good Councillor Guide.
I'll tell you first, I'm not going to debate this point because it's not what they...
No, it's important. You have just instructed this council chairman that they can have a working group of one person, which is unlawful. So as a point of order, I'd like you to retract that and refer it. It says in the Local Government Act.
Two things. First of all, that is a good councillor guide.
Based on legal advice.
Secondly, it does not say that in it. Thirdly, if you can find any law that says a council working group has to have a particular membership, I'm very pleased to receive it, because I can't find that.
I have seen it in the past.
Excuse me, when I raised that with council solicitor before, then that was the advice I was giving. It's entirely up to the council. There is no law of council. But perhaps the solicitor was wrong. I now hand over...
Go on now. Anyone allowed?
My day's right.
Go on, I'll just check in with chair too. Let's get to the general item 10. It says appendix E, but there aren't any appendixes. So I'm not sure what's in the appendix E.
It says appendix E, yeah.
Where? Is it where?
On the top.
On the top of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, just when we have other items, it said, I can never accept them. There might be another. Anyway, it ran with it. What it is, I believe, chairman, it says here, general item 10, strategic aims 379, that's the one we're looking at, isn't it? Yes, right. I believe that this is too big an animal for us to tackle this evening, chairman. I also believe it's left a little bit wanting, because I'm sure that when originally I approached the office, the councillors that I was representing at times were looking at a restructure, because at the moment we have a council, a staffing, etc. And I don't see it on here. So looking at the proposals, I would say that in actual fact, the proposal should be that a task and finish working group should be set up to review the working groups, to review the outside bodies, more importantly, to review the structure of the council, because that is what the councillors have said to me, we're not 170. That is the only comment I wish to make at this time. Thank you.
You've got a note of yours?
Oh, yeah.
And what's it coming on your paper?
What are you making in the paper?
Well, it was a...
Just a second. First of all, it is important, it is the clerk's paper. I'm giving the clerk opportunity to address the paper. Do you wish to address it? It's your choice.
It's just that this was obviously asked by a few members, which is hence why I bought the paper of the working groups and people wanted to set up task and finish working groups to sort out the other ones. So it's a different thing.
So I'll come back to Adam again, perhaps. I'll come back to Adam again, first of all. Where are you making the proposal then, before we pop another question in?
Yeah, the proposal would be that this is too big for tonight. And the proposal is that a task and finish working group is set up with a remit to look at the structure, the working groups, how many people should be on them, and delegate powers, and any outside bodies, do we need them?
Okay, I'll come back to that one. We're all doing the other members' debates, and then we'll come back to your note.
Yep, no, that's fine, chairman. Thank you.
Yes, just two things. Well, first of all, I'm not quite sure what this neighbourhood plan steering group, is that what Mr Clark was saying?
Neighbourhood Plan Steering Group is a working group that was set up by council. It's own subject terms of reference. Now available. The clerk will give you a copy.
We haven't had a report, but have a recent one, have we?
An updated action.
Yes.
All right, okay, right. Well, I didn't know about that one. And the other thing is, this is not what was said at the last meeting. Thank you.
Sorry, what was not said?
That it was going to be this. I explained earlier. And this is not what was intimated at the last meeting. That's why I said what I said. Thank you.
I'll let Martin just wait and come back to you.
Thank you. Yes, I don't want to be rude, but I don't understand all this bit about the why that's even in there, the five to 10 years strategic plan. It's a bit of a muddle to me, the whole document. But my listening to people was that this evening, we were going to appoint people to fill the vacancies in working groups, outside bodies, and possibly even vote on restructuring the council. I know that somebody objects to it, and it probably won't happen until next year. But there is no reason why we couldn't have said tonight that we wish to have two meetings a month. I have an issue with the structure of the council. If I get permanent employment, my employer said to me, yes, we fully understand that you need time off for council meetings, but like the planning meeting today, which we only got a notification of the three days before, I can't go to my employer and say, by the way, I'm off in three days. So the whole business of how this council is run needs to be looked at and done properly. You know, we can have calendars for meetings and things, and if we don't need the meeting, like RCC don't have all their meetings, we just cancel it. But if we've got a sheet of paper at the beginning of the year, it shows we've got good governance, and that's an important thing. But I can't, I don't understand what we're trying to achieve from this proposal. I don't see the need for a working group. I think it needs the clerk to go away and talk to the outside bodies, because a lot of them don't need us. We don't need to be on them, because it's dropped down over the years from a considerable number. And the clerk could find out, do you need people? Because we should have four on one body, but we only have two, but they don't actually want to have four. So we need to look at it and then come back to council and put the people that are required. We need to come back to council and say, we want two meetings a month. Yes or no? It's simple. We don't need a working group to...
That's your view.
Yeah, that's my view, and I'm entitled to it. So I'm just... Yeah, I'm just saying that I hope others people will take notice of that.
Thank you, chairman. Well, it's always been a bear of mine, as you know. I've never been on the council, whether we have working groups, we know powers, know budget, know nothing. To me, this to be a meaningful authority, we should have at least two meetings a month. And whether we have a planning... I mean, I agree with that. It is something that is due. But to me, we should be having subcommittees or a committee. Maybe GW, I think, should be a full-blown committee with a delegated budget and delegated powers. Because we don't need to sit here on a full council discussing half of these papers. We should only be getting reports from them, ratifying the decisions that the committees have made. And if you've got more than half the members of the council on the committee, you've got a good broad spectrum of opinion from the members of the council. So to me, I would scrap the working groups tomorrow, and we would have proper, full working committees with delegated budget, delegated powers. And I do not take on... I will take issue that I do not think any working group, committee, whatever you want, whatever structure we have, should have one member on it. Especially when anything is being dealt with with the financial side. Because I know everyone comes back to council for ratification, but things are said, promises are made, and there's no checks and balances. And that's what an authority should be all about, checks and balances, making sure that the decisions and things that are said, well, we've got it in the picture, we've been off to Israel, promised them all these things, and wasn't a minister in sight, you know? And that is the problem. And I do think the proper way forward for this authority to get to grips with what we should be doing, not discussing a lot of... Some of the stuff we discuss, I can't believe we're actually doing it as opposed to working on not putting any representation forward, that one-way system. We have no, we have not said anything that we say...
Authority wandering on the...
No. What I'm getting, my point I'm making is, the way we are structured, we discuss everything, and everything and nothing, but the important issues, like the one-way system, we have never debated. We have never put our, as a town council, we've never put our view forward. And I think subcommittee, something. as a town council, we've never put our view forward, and I think some committees, some, some committees and the committees are the way forward, and I'm, I'm, I'm back, Adam.
With proper calendar.
Yours?
You've heard me say it before, and I'll say it again, we should be back where we started before all this silly nonsense about restructuring and doing this and that, it worked perfectly all right. Alf Durs did a flow chart, eighteen months to, whenever, before he left. And now we're starting back at square one. For goodness sake, two meetings a month, one a full council, and one parks, planning and recreation, and general purposes. And that would stop all this squabbling, and let's get down to doing some work. For goodness sake, we're now back at square one again, and that's not on. I'm sorry to go wrong about it, but I've said it so often, and nobody, but nobody is.
They are listening to us, so they're not hearing.
Anybody else want to comment?
I've got your second.
Yes. Um, the clerk's report, um, you've made some recommendations, so, um, there's some committees and groups you'd like us to, um, set up potentially. Are they, I presume these are addressing needs that you have, um, and if they, if so, can we just be clear that if there's going to be a protracted debate, that we're not um, letting the clerk down in support that she may need in some of the points, such as the issue on IT systems, um, and like, do, do, do we need support for the clerk in some of these points, right, so that's all I'd like to ensure is clear, that we don't bear off.
Chairman, can I just, yeah, but this is what I was trying to raise, that we've got things in here that should be separate items, because we've got these serious matters, and we don't even have proposals for them.
From what I've heard, picked up, I think that the idea of having two meetings a month, so that we can pass, you know, we can get through all these, go into working parties, and we know that it's going to get through, and that we have the two meetings a month, that would save a lot of work and a lot of this, this, you know, difficulties, and if we didn't need it one month, the council, and so I would support the two gentlemen across there that suggested that.
I.
And the lady gets no.
Right, Adam, you've made a proposal, can, can you resist?
I, I just propose that. And my proposal was, because this is such a large piece to discuss, I mean, it's now already a quarter past over, we can talk about this in ten minutes. Proposal was that it, yes, we could do this, do that, do the other, but it's more to just set up a working group. So the proposal is that we do need a task and finish working group to get together and bring back a formalized paper to the council next month, saying we should have this, with this amount of people and those delegated authorities. This, yeah, so proposal is that a working group is set up to define what the council wants. Maybe the people who have working groups, the people who have the best ideas, they'll be spoken to. Um, so that's the proposal, working group to bring back a, a, it actually says it in here, committee, subcommittees and working group restructures. And to look at the current structure and make any detailed recommendations to improve current arrangements.
Yeah.
Maybe not in all of the current arrangements, so proposal to set up a working group to make this more.
For one month, for one month, you've, you've got.
Working group, did you take that?
Okay, please. You've got that, yeah. Do I have a second proposal?
Can I also make an additional proposal, please? And that's that there's a, that, yes, it's not a counter, it's additional, that there's also an additional, because there is a serious issue here, an additional working group set up to sort out this issue with the IT systems and support. Because by the time that gets sorted, that's going to be another month. But I think we could set up a working group tonight to help the clerk with these IT things. I'm not worried about the five or ten year strategic plan, because I've been asking for that for ten years. Um, but the IT thing, I don't want that to be missed.
If you want, well, can I ask a question as well?
I'm getting the computer, I was getting the feeling that we don't want working groups, and we do want working groups. For a proposal, but first of all, we've had a.
Well, we've set up a committees for IT systems and support.
Please, councillor Brooks, we've had an amendment to Adam's proposal suggested. Adam, do you accept, it's your proposal, do you accept that as part of the proposal?
No.
No, okay, so, so that then, that.
Then I'm concerned it will be forgotten.
Well, no, no, so, chairman, because if, if the work group that is set up could come back and say to council, right, we want a planning meeting, we want a council meeting, I want a staffing meeting, and the working group should be an IT one to help the clerk, a PPWZ one, could be one to control the rats and the bins, people like it. The thing is, is that by doing this proposal, the councillors that get onto that working group will go away and come back. So Martin, if he goes onto that group, he'll make sure that that lands in December. And the working group that is set up, the, the, the thing is, it's now upon them to not dawdle, because we, I can get people. They can grip it, meet, come back in December, and go, right, this is what we proposed.
I'll second that.
So anyway, well, it's already been.
That's, that's my concern.
Right, no, council.
No, but that's my concern, is that we, if we've got to wait, no, that's the point. If we've got to wait until December to set up working groups, then we're not going to do anything on the IT this year.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
I don't want to afford another adjustment, we'll be here all night. We had a proposal, we've had a memorandum of proposal, which the proposal won't accept.
So I've put a proposal that we set up a working group, it wasn't, it wasn't an amendment to the proposal. No, chairman, I put a proposal, not, so my proposal needs to be, to receive a second or at all.
I just think if they modify this, the members of, uh, no one will be going, and the clerk can get this done. And we're complying with our own standing orders. So first of all, we had a proposal, we had a suggestive amendment to that proposal, and then.
No, it was a proposal.
Then it has to go back to the proposal, because it was accepted, but she wouldn't.
Sorry, chairman, it wasn't, it wasn't an amendment, it was a proposal.
Do you now wish to make a counter proposal?
Yes, that's what I did in the first place, chairman. No, I'm not repeating it, I made a proposal, which you described as an amendment.
Proposal that councillor Brooks made is not going to repeat.
I would like to, I'll repeat it, because we don't want to mess this up. I would like the council to agree to set up a working group to help the clerk sort out these issues with the IT and support. Because if we defer this until December, we're not going to get it done until the new year.
If that's of the club.
You're seconding that, right, all those in favour? Against?
Okay, then you don't get the IT supported up until next year.
Then to the proposal that Adam made, do we have a second of that? All those in favour? Against? Abstentions?
No, I'd vote it.
Oh, absolutely, I just want to get forward.
But I can't affect the clerk. So, chairman, the only, the only thing is now, it would make sense to people to be, councillors to go onto that working group, so they can start.
I'd want to hear that.
No, not.
I'd love to.
It always happens, no one wants to do it.
Okay, chairman, we've now resolved the working group in the centre.
Nick, do you want to go on?
The council in December.
People are volunteering.
Now, we have volunteers, nominations, whatever you want to do.
Adam is volunteering.
Councillor Lowry, you can work with the council.
Well, that's terrible, since you prefer.
Who, who wants to go, who would like to go on this working group?
There's nobody putting their hands up, like, David. I'd like to know it.
And, Martin? David?
I don't know where he is.
Who's going on it?
Anybody else?
I, I, I would love to, but I can't on my way to.
Adam?
My work.
Can we please?
Do you join, George?
Can I just ask, will this working group meet any evening, so it doesn't exclude those that work?
Those who work.
Yeah, it'd be.
Okay.
George?
Can, uh, it's just a state, I'm just saying.
Are you pointing for it?
It depends who's on it.
Well, we've got David and Martin.
Paul's putting it under.
Yeah.
Somebody else.
In front, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Sam?
So, chairman, can the council give us a clear indication, because of all the confusion, what they actually want us to do?
Can you say that?
Well, no, to me, that's very confusing.
I wish I could, you shouldn't be the only one watching, but it's clear.
Do you second it for that, though?
I'm for twenty-nine, I'm second to that.
It's a hard proposal.
I'm second, and I'm second to this.
All those in favour?
Yes.
Against? Abstentions?